Yeah, okay. It's five o'clock. I'm going to call the village board Oregon meeting for Monday, August first, 2022. Candy, can we have your call?
Beal.
Here.
Lish.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Harrison.
Here.
Name Camden.
Here.
And. And Vexion.
Okay, we'll go to number three, which is approval of July eighteenth, 2022. There was four minutes. I'll take a motion in a second during the table. Mike and Amanda. Okay, we're going to motion in a second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Both. Very good. Four is public appearances. This part of the agenda allows members of the public to write information to the village board, including items on and off the agenda. Fifteen minutes will be provided for this item with three minutes maximum for a speaker. Anybody in the audience like to elaborate? So, before.
Randy, do you want me to speak now or wait until our section comes?
We're going to wait for your item.
Okay.
All right. Yes, ma'am. Come on up. Hello, my name and your address.
The Oregon Observer. Unfortunately, she's unable to be here due to work conflict. July is Park Recreation Month. I would like to celebrate by advocating for a beautiful Sculpture Garden Park at two forty-nine North Main Street. This park will have walking paths, sculptures, native gardens, old growth trees, a shelter for gatherings, and a children's creative play area. It will be a unique destination park like none other in Oregon. Some people say we need to sell this land to generate income for the village. I am a physical conservative, and so am I, and I am all in favor of the village making money. However, selling this land will have the opposite effect. Various government officials have remarked that the village overpaid for this land and will not get back the money put in. We only, we may only recruit one-third to two-thirds of the amount of the purchase price. That means a developer will get a great deal at taxpayer expense. Why should taxpayers lose several hundred thousand dollars to sell off the land? This property is a tax incremental financing, TIF district, which means a developer will likely ask for TIF money to finance their development. Rather than taxes going for public services, they would go to pay off the TIF. Other taxpayers would like, would pick up the bill for services like fire, EMS, and schools. In contrast, the sculpture park would be financed with fundraising, volunteers, and business contributors. In addition, parks are known to increase income from communities. Research shows a five percent uptick in property values for homes within five hundred feet of the park. Higher home values not only benefit the owners of the properties, but the tax base of local government. Parks also increase tourism and sales at local shops and restaurants. The Sculpture Park, due to its proximity to our downtown, just a couple of minute walk, will be an economic boon to downtown businesses. That's why over fifty businesses have already endorsed. Parks increase economic transactions for communities. Red Wing, Minnesota started a sculpture park last year with public art in parks and along streets. On the day after Thanksgiving, shops brought in five hundred thousand dollars in sales, their biggest day in over twenty years of having this event. This is the value of parks, public art, and outdoor activities. They can thrive even during a pandemic. Parks draw businesses and people to community as well. Eighty-two percent of the corporate executives rated quality of life features like parks as an important factor when choosing a location. Home buyers similarly want to purchase homes close to parks, open spaces, and greenery. City parks and open spaces also improve physical and mental health, reducing medical and insurance costs. For all of these reasons and more, the Sculpture Garden Park will strengthen Oregon's economy. Thank you for listening, and thank you for your time.
My name is Susan Chudovy. I live at eighteen sixty County Road MM in Fitchburg. I have a letter from my son. He was not able to be here because he's working, but I would like to read his letter. "I am writing this letter because some people opposing the Sculpture Garden Park have painted the supporters of the park in an unfair, negative light to try to discredit them. I think this is unfortunate and that it contributes to a contentious environment in our community. Oregon has been getting the reputation in Dane County for intolerance when people don't agree. This happens in the newspaper and on Facebook. In fact, people readily comment about the toxic tone of letters to the editor and on Facebook posts. I was doing business in Verona last week when the business owner commented that the Oregon Village Board has the reputation of not listening to its citizens. Citizens as well as Oregon businesses who have been given a clear vision of the park are in support of the park. The village board needs to listen to them. Toxic behavior discourages involvement in the community. It prevents people from stepping forward with ideas, and it stops them from feeling comfortable about volunteering. People are afraid to put themselves out there because they could get shot down for having new ideas. For example, those who are enthusiastic about creating a beautiful community park in downtown Oregon have been vilified by opponents. They've been called names, their character has been disparaged, and their motives have been questioned. This behavior needs to stop. What has happened to civility and the right to disagree respectfully? A recent example of this negativity appeared in a July twenty-eight Oregon Observer letter. The letter dismissed supporters of the garden park, saying they are just the neighborhood or they are outsiders, and they're just a few who are being catered to. This makes no sense. How can you be in the neighborhood and an outsider at the same time, unless you think that anyone who disagrees with you is an outsider? The July twenty-eight letter goes on to accuse park supporters of not being transparent with their brochure. Yet, the Friends of Oregon Sculpture Garden has specific, was specifically listed on the brochure as the group that produced the material. It also listed the website, where you can see the two hundred-plus endorsers and over fifty businesses that are supporting the park. That is true transparency. Endorsers come from throughout the area, and their names are listed on the website. This community park would have walking paths, native plants, free public art, a shelter, and a kids' playing area. The park will provide relaxation and enjoyment for village residents while drawing visitors to the downtown businesses. It will be good for families and good for local businesses. Please visit the website and join in an exciting, creative, and beneficial adventure in Oregon. Thank you."
Glenn Petrie, six forty-eight Northwoods Edge. Also like to talk about the Sculpture Park. I mean, I think it's a nice idea. However, I take issue with basically kind of giving the land away to it. There was talk that, oh, we're never going to recoup the value of it, but I don't see the value in just giving it away. Who's going to pay for its upkeep? Who's going to pay for its development? It does have value, and if the village truly believes this is a consideration, it should be put to the village as a referendum to gain village support. I don't think it's something that the village needs to rush into a decision. We've had this land for quite a while now. So, waiting for the outcome of the survey that was done last week and exploring that, I think, would be very valuable to the community. And let's see what else I have here. In the letter that Ms. Vogler put out, she said that TIF money would be awash for public services such as police, fire, and that. But at least that wash would cover its expenses, and it wouldn't be an added cost to the village. I think we need to be careful and not make the same mistakes as I feel that we may have made with the baseball park, where all of a sudden, presto, magico, we just donated the money for the rest of the park when they hadn't even garnered half of what they were supposed to raise. And I think that pretty much covers the points I had. I just think we need to really evaluate it before we just commit to giving another six hundred thousand or eight hundred thousand, whatever we're valuing it at. We spent one, one point two at this point, so, thank you.
All right. Thank you, John. Anybody else? Okay. See, none? We'll go into five, the allegations and announcements. Five A is upcoming meetings and events in our package. Anybody question? Six? Yeah, Phil. Mr. Hammond, sir. Part finished, I think. Five. Okay, thank you. Can I get? Somebody else? Yeah, Amanda?
You didn't see the transportation video yet. It's a reminder that the first meeting is on the third, five o'clock.
Anybody else? Not Derek.
He's going to throw in a reminder too that since that fire prevention meeting is at five thirty, we have to go to the board on the line to finish that night. But keep going to just wait for that.
Sure. All right, anybody else? Okay. Let's go to sixteen, which is a report on acquisition costs for two forty-nine North Main Street property. There was a report in our package. Martin, do we need to? I know Phil requested it.
Right.
Phil?
I would just say that I appreciate very much, and this is exactly what I was looking for. So, I appreciate it from that point.
Okay. Yeah.
I just want to add a few thoughts. I think the number is important. I also think that Phil asked the wrong question. The question we should be asking is what can we get for the property if we sell it? We may have spent one point two million, but that money, that ship has sailed. Okay? We have committed ourselves, we have already paid interest. We've committed ourselves to pay the rest of it. We cannot prepay those bonds. That's three hundred thousand dollars. The value of the property was eight hundred ninety thousand, and from my discussions with people, the majority of the people that are sitting at this table think that we had overpaid for it. A number of people that I've talked to within Oregon think that the village overpaid for that property. It was assessed at six hundred and seventy-five thousand. We purchased it at eight hundred and ninety thousand. There's been discussion at this table that we would sell a portion of the property and turn part of it into a park. So, that will further reduce the value of the property. We're entering a weak real estate market as interest rates go up, which will further depress its sales price. At least one of the staff people that I, that I've talked to in a position to know this believes that the property might, might bring us three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is significantly less than the one point two million. Just complete value and overpaid for the property at eight point nine million doesn't, or eight hundred ninety thousand doesn't make any difference about. I purchased my car for twenty-four thousand dollars. The dealer would very happily have taken a hundred thousand from me. That doesn't make my car a hundred thousand dollar car when I go to sell it. So, instead of looking at this as, I mean, yes, the village could gain three hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred thousand dollars for this, but we have to realize that we're also losing eight hundred, eight hundred and fifty thousand that once we sell this, that we will never be cool. If this was a business as opposed to a village, this would be written off as a loss, not as, oh gee, we're making money. I think we need to be a little bit more creative on, on how we look at this property and how it can be used to mitigate our losses. I agree with what the gentleman out there said. There's, there's no reason to rush on this. We currently owe six hundred and sixty-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars for interest and principal on this property over the next fifteen years. You work out the math on that, we're paying forty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars a year for this piece of property for the next four years, fifteen years. That works out to nine hundred, or to nine dollars and eighty-three cents per piece of property in Oregon. That's what it's adding to the tax bill if you assume that we have roughly forty-five hundred taxable properties. That's less than the cost of breakfast downtown one day for the entire year. We shouldn't be in a hurry to get rid of this, to say, oh gee, we got it on our bottom line, that we need three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, when in the long term, it may be far more expensive to us to get rid of it. To put this in perspective.
Point board, Chairman?
Yes.
I don't believe, like, Mike, how much more you got to go?
A paragraph.
Okay.
To put this in perspective, the village board tonight, and something that is on its agenda, is proposing or planning in its capital improvement project to add Village Duck that will add six hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty cents to everyone's tax bill over the next five years. So, every year, in five years, every year your bill will come in at six hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty cents, and we're arguing over something that's less than ten bucks. I think there's bigger fish to fry, and I think we need to be more creative with how we're dealing with our finances.
Okay, thank you. All right, I need to go back up. I skipped one here, folks. Six A, which is village administrator's report. So, that was in our package, just didn't want to skip it. If anybody has any questions, remark on that. All right. Let's go on then to six C, which is a report from Assistant Director of Public Works on Water Utility, PFAS sampling. Yeah, but Sue, you're going to take it?
Yeah, sure. So, we did get an opportunity for DNR to actually do voluntary testing of PFOs, and since it is something that is in all of the news, and really, we do get a couple of questions a year about this, we could go ahead and participate in that. We are very happy and pleased to report that all, all three wells, we had non-detectable limits, at or below non-detectable limits on all of our wells, which is fantastic news. The tester and the information are in there. Lauren's prepared a memo here. You know, we are very proud of the water we serve, the village with, and this is another indication that we can be dealing with some of the things that have kind of been showing up in the news and dealing with PFOs and they had to pull that, get it to the ground.
All right. Anybody have a question? Yeah.
No, we're okay for it.
Okay. Report. Yeah. Okay. Cash and. Point out anything to anybody or? Anybody? Any question? Cancel, okay? Okay, thank you. We'll go to six E, which is village department head, SANS consultant. Comments? Yeah. All right. Chief, you want to go first and then Jeff?
Uh, my, uh, so I had a community member reach out several times, and we talked about, she had some concerns, she lives in the community, and as our community is growing, she feels it's getting more and more confusing with the different speed limits throughout the village. There's forty-five, there's thirty-five, there's twenty-five. Some of the areas that she mentioned are not within our jurisdiction, but there were several that are. Examples of this would be Lincoln Road, Netherwood, Netherwood Park Street, even out by our police department. I explained to her the reasons why those speed limits are different, but, and that she could certainly come here and talk about her thoughts on mile per hour speed limit differences. And I also explained to her why there's sometimes a difference, that the community chooses to do that that way. But she asked that I just bring this thought to all of you. I tried to get her here, but she just felt that it would be best if she could stay home and I would bring it up for her. So, I told her if I need to, maybe just bringing her concerns about the confusion with the various speed limits would be something that would resonate with you as you move forward and look at further development. So, just for my.
All right, Chief. All right. Mr. Bree? Mine will be shorter than that. Mine will be shorter than that.
We get their, construction did start today on the intersection of South Prairie Parkway and Davidville Street. So, uh, that is now blocked off in the north-south direction. Uh, we do have the tour signs up, there's been maps put out and everything. There'll still be people that are trying to find their way, but hopefully in the next day or so that'll kind of smooth out. About thirty days is what we're at, just taking for closure.
Yeah, I just wanted to say a couple of things. As you know, we're and that is all the public works helping me. Eighty-five boxes over the day, so. And I also want to hear about the construction because today, um, we've had a couple of concerns residents to call.
Anybody else? Okay, uh, six F is village board comments. Anybody?
Oh, and we're second one.
Alright, let's go to seven then, communication of this lady's business. Items are for discussion, possible action. Seven A is approval vouchers in the amount of one million, one hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty and four cents. So, I'll take a motion in a second to get that on the table. Alright, Phil, give me a motion, Amanda? Alright, questions? Anybody got any questions on the vouchers? Mike's got one.
Yeah, um, number six thousand, three hundred and thirty for fire capital equipment, what was that?
Our portion of the gas, or the capital purchasing that the county, the fire district?
Okay, so it wasn't for a specific item?
It's for whatever the fire district had in their budget that they're purchasing. That's our portion of it, I don't remember off the top of my head.
Yeah, that was thirty dollars.
Yeah.
Thanks. Anybody else? I, I do have one Lisa, it's, um, twenty-five thirty-seven. It's, uh, from Ellers, going, we're just about twenty-five hundred. We haven't talked about doors in a long time.
Right. Want me to take that one?
Yeah, sure. Give me the contact.
Um, so, we did some work with Ellers and, or both in twenty nineteen and in twenty twenty-one as a other community kind of turned up working for contract and see if it's been looking more viable at that point. Um, Ellers never billed us for that work they did for Warren until recently and there's been an official year. Found that that had never been invoiced, um, we've been moving back and forth with Tom Warren, um, regarding that, out of any invoice. So, it seems great to pay that, um, but initially we wanted to make sure that Ell, Ellers cost recovery.
Anybody else? Alright, Ken, on paper voice, will you come on this?
Yes.
Maybe Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. We'll go to seven D, which is five year repayment agreement that landed with these, okay, these? For first off, your employment costs of these are standard, we've seen them before, so, um, I'll take a motion in a second. Derek first, now, any, any discussion, any questions on this? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Seven C is request to post to Oregon Area Security Center on Friday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-two at one o'clock. TM for a staff in-service staff recommendation is to prove as presented. Take a motion in a second, Amanda, as often as you. Any discussion, any questions? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Seven D is review bids and consider awarding contracts for twenty twenty-two roadway maintenance. Staff recommendation, motion to accept the base bid, supplemental bid and alternative, alternate bid for contract A of the twenty twenty-two roadway maintenance and improvement project and award the contract for pulverizing, and repaving, milling, and repaving the storm sewer improvements to Payne and Doyle. Oh, Doyle, I'm sorry. Martin, can we do it all? Okay. Do it all at once and that's in the amount of five hundred and ninety thousand, seven hundred and forty-four and fifty cents. And to accept the base bid and alternate bid for contract B of the twenty twenty-two roadway maintenance and improvement project and award the contract for crack filling and chip sealing to Farner?
Farner.
Farner Asphalt Seaters LLC in the amount of one thirty-nine, seven thirty-one. So, I'll take a motion in a second. With the football hill, man. Okay, Phil and Amanda, anybody have any questions on, on these contracts? Okay, see none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you.
Thank you, Randy, just to comment if people are interested to see what roads are being done. There are maps in the packet that, uh, they should look up and, uh, that tells exactly what, what maintenance work will be done this year.
Alright, perfect. Alright, seven E, can, uh, consider a potential change order for additional pickleball courts in phase one. J C Park redevelopment project. Jeff, do you wanna start this off? We'll have, uh, we'll have Mike come up after, maybe you give us a little brief.
Right, so, um, so again, uh, you all have received an updated packet today. We basically, at, at the July eleventh, or, uh, in this July eleventh village board meeting, village board authorized another hundred and sixty thousand dollars in the surplus funds to go to the pickleball courts. The action at that time was to, uh, work with Mike and, um, Jerome and kind of, uh, finalizing the design for the courts. Work with Retler on that and then submit that back to Fisher Excavator, which is the contractor, to see the change order amount for that. Um, the, did it, what was added to the packet today was kind of the analysis on that. Um, some of the minor changes included adding some four-foot, uh, fencing and some other, uh, modifying fences a little bit higher to accommodate wind screens. And then, um, just modifying the courts very slightly in the width. Um, the change order, when it was actually, when it was originally bid as an alternate for the six courts was one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and three cents. Um, the change order submitted in the proposal, uh, to be included in phase one was two hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifteen, sixty-eight cents, which is an increase of eighty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents. Um, like we talked about that night, we weren't surprised to see numbers getting come in higher, I was surprised to see it come in as high as they did. Um, the main impacts to the, uh, numbers were from mobilization and restoration of almost sixteen thousand dollars. Asphalt costs went up on, uh, well, almost twenty-nine thousand, so twenty-eight, eight thirty-two. And then the changing for fencing and gates came up, uh, forty thousand dollars there. Um, there's an option to remove the fencing, um, the four-foot, uh, split fencing between the courts that came with a deduct if we were, uh, interested of eighteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two. Um, pickleball be presenting kind of tonight, Mike, Mike went with us, uh, today to talk about some additional fundraising they have. The long and short of depending on alternates chosen and everything, there's still a deficit of about fifty-two thousand to seventy thousand dollars. Um, I added for full transparency in this, the change order amount, you'll see a change order come through at our next village board meeting. Include cost of sixty-four thousand dollars for three hundred and ninety-six loads of concrete rubble that had to be removed from the park. Um, uh, that was buried in a berm. We think our predecessors are, are the ones who have gone before us, um, and burying that stuff for us to find again. Um, about five thousand dollars for minor utility modifications. And then there were some modifications to the V F W memorial area that involved us adding quite a few more leg holes, um, that matched what we had in an agreement with the V F W. That did not match the design. So, um, at all total, this amounts to just about a hundred thousand dollars of changes today on the J C Park. Um, we're also working with Sketchworks Architecture in, uh, possible change to the, we have the value engineer, the concession stand, which still has to be part of phase one. Um, and, and hopefully get bid this fall is our plan. What we're looking at right now is actually taking away the second story, which would take away the architectural treatment to make it look like the Tin Man, which is fine. It's just, you look like a regular, uh, concession building. And we did lose the second story, which was really just scorekeeping and some storage up there. Um, but we still have to be able to accommodate those kind of costs in the overall, uh, project budget. I see you have a, you have a difficult proposal before you. I know pickleball's here tonight to talk to you about that. Um, village board made the decision to authorize a hundred and sixty thousand before, so I don't have any recommendation for you, I'll let you guys come up with that.
So, Jeff, just to help us, tell us, what is the total? What do I? Final amount?
Well, the total cost was two, is, under the change order is two hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifteen. Pickleball, the, according where it was when I wrote this memo, they raised in, in pledges and fundraising about thirty-two thousand, five hundred. With the two hundred and sixty minute from the village, it's a hundred and ninety-two thousand. Um, that would put them at a deficit of either fifty-one thousand, five hundred or seventy thousand. Now, there's some, there's some additional pledges and stuff that, that Michael talked to you about, but, um, that's where, based on my analysis, where it was.
Okay. Alright. So, you really wanna, have a, should we, a question, Mike? I'd stop. You have a question for Jeff?
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah.
Oh, well, my question was in relationship to fencing, so I guess, I'm not sure if that's better for Jack or for the local folks, but, um, I was just curious about that we, if the fencing was moved either permanently or for addition to the future phase, how does that affect?
The fencing, well, the fencing credit that, that the fencing contractor, um, been working with the pickleball folks, um, they've requested that some of the more professionally designed courts actually have fencing between the courts. Um, and it's about a four-foot high fence. And so, uh, and, and also we asked that there'd be some gates in between just to allow some motion because, um, not all of us can leave four-foot high fences anymore, and, um, myself included. And so, that's the fencing we're talking about. There'd still be fencing around the, uh, pickleball courts.
Yeah, it'd be in between?
Just be in between, correct.
And so, it, it would necessarily affect game play though?
It, it, it really affects safety, not necessarily, well, it does affect gameplay, but let me talk about the safety aspect. The reason that the, as Jeff pointed out, the more professionally designed courts, and, and I wouldn't even say, because this is professionally designed. You, you have different degrees of court design, you know, good, better, best and excellent. This falls under the, the best, not quite excellent. And the reason they do that is, is a couple of reasons. One is from a safety perspective. You have balls that can go back and forth between courts. You have people that are not watching the courts next to them, they're watching what's going on. And it's very easy to trip on a ball, or more importantly, step on a ball and twist an ankle. That can happen quite often. Um, you will also see as the skill level of pickleball players goes up, it's not the same game as novice players that they're right in front of the net and hitting it. They'll be going around the post and they'll be doing different shots that more skilled players can do. So, now you have players running into other courts. And that can be, uh, obviously a detriment in, in itself.
Alright, so Mike, we'll get back to you, but I must see, Phil had a question for, for Jeff?
Yeah, thanks, okay. Uh, you, you said that we'd so far expended a hundred thousand of contingency and that, that.
That's, that we, we're, we, we expended a hundred thousand dollars, you know, above what we've already adjusted.
And what is the total?
Who did I read that question? Um.
I, it's not critical.
See, normally we plan on five percent and, you know, on three million dollars, it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Oh, we're willing.
Yeah, they would. But, as you know, I mean, your problems usually occur right off the bat, which is for base stabilization.
Sure.
Uh, soils, uh, very, very things here, got big concrete rubble, that kind of stuff. You don't tend to find those too much in a layer portion of the product.
Thank you.
Thanks. Alright, so, so Mike, let's, you're gonna talk to the pickleball folks. Let's have, get your name and address, let's get you on the record.
Okay.
And then you just go ahead.
Alright, great. Uh, my name is Mike Barone, six-three-one Bergamot Boulevard. I'm sure you're all tired of seeing me up here again for about the fifth time this year. Um, but thank you for letting me, letting me speak. Um, pickleball's here behind me, uh, we got quite a few people. Um, obviously you know the interest, I'm not gonna backtrack into that. Um, we have talked about the courts for quite a while. I just wanted to talk, Jeff did a great job of summarizing where we are with the cost and, and the added cost. I've gone through the line items, Jeff has shared the bids with me. Uh, I've gone through that too, there's some costs that I just don't understand, but Jeff is sorting through that. Um, when you look at the cost on a per-court basis, I think I've, uh, I actually know I wrote an email to the board a while back and, and I brought it up in the meetings. Um, the original bid put our courts at a, just under thirty thousand dollars per court, twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred dollars. At the time, I mentioned to you, that was a great price as compared to the other communities that are building courts right now. Sun Prairie just finished their courts up, four brand new courts for a total of ten. Those courts averaged fifty-six thousand dollars a court. The, uh, McFarland folks are building eight courts right now. Uh, they're averaging fifty-five, six hundred, fifty-five thousand, six hundred a court. So, even with our revised, um, R F P price, the courts are averaging forty-three thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars, which is still in, it brings it up into the neighborhood of where the other courts are, but it's still better than what we're seeing in the area. Uh, pickleball's been in front of you, uh, many times, as I've said. Uh, the, the administrative staff and the village board have said, we have to get out there and raise money. You dangled that carrot out there. We grabbed the carrot and we ran with it. Um, in the last meeting, the, um, we committed to having thirty-three thousand dollars in donations. That included twenty-five thousand, five hundred dollars of new donations plus the previous seventy-five hundred dollars in donations. So, that brought it to thirty-three thousand dollars. Since then, I went in front of the Economic Tourism Board here in Oregon and was awarded another five thousand dollars because we're gonna bring in people, maybe some overnight stays. When you take the base price of the R F, uh, of the R F P, the two sixty-two, seven fifteen, and you subtract the already approved village funds of one sixty, take our thirty-three off of that and the additional five thousand dollars, that leaves the bill to be paid at sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars. Now, as Jeff said, we continue to raise money. You dangled the carrot, we're still grabbing at it and we're still running with it. We raised another fifteen thousand dollars since the last meeting. So, we have a total now of fifty-three thousand dollars that we've raised, which is twenty-one percent of this project. Better than any other sports club has done. On top of that, Jeff had made mention about some gates. Um, there are ten four-foot gates in this design that we, that we have. From a pickleball perspective, we only need six of those gates. The four that are within the, the realm of the playing field, we don't need. We can walk around to get into the other court, that's not a problem. Those gates are valued at fourteen hundred dollars apiece. So, now when you take the four gates at fourteen hundred dollars, that's another fifty-six hundred bucks. We feel from the pickleball community, we can save that money and that brings the new total down to forty-four thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars. So, that's what I'm here asking for the village to figure out somehow. I sat down with Martin today and Jeff, uh, Randy and I have talked, I've laid out the proposal. Uh, for forty-four thousand dollars, we can get to where we need to be. I just wanna talk about the other side of the coin because there's, there's also in these past meetings, there's been talk about phase two, we can put pickleball in phase two. Just a couple of thoughts about that. Um, the money that we've raised, the fifty-three thousand dollars is all predicated, as I've said before, about moving forward in phase one and getting these courts built this fall with the design we've talked about. If we wait until phase two, by the board's own admission, and it's, it's on record, uh, that If we wait until phase two, by the board's own admission, and it's, it's on record that we don't know the timing and we don't know the funding, so who knows when and if it's, if it's gonna happen. The other thing is, let's say it does get approved for next year, you still have to bid it out. Inflation right now is at nine percent, and it probably coming down a little bit, but who knows? We still have to bid that project out and competitively bid it, and you will probably bring the cost down a little bit, but then that side of the coin is you lost the fifty-three thousand dollars that Pickleball has committed. And I really hate to do that, because, like I said, you dangled the carrot and we're there. And, and you, you gave us a challenge. That, that's, that's the integrity of the board, that's what you need to do. And, and we're there, and we, we grabbed it and we're running with it. So I'm here to ask that to somehow, some way, come up with the forty-four thousand dollars, let's sign the change order. I've got checks here, I'm ready to turn over. You know, I've got some other people gonna think about donating. Let's, let's get on with the process. Thank you.
So, so Mike and I did, did meet this morning, and I was honest with Mike, is we don't, we're gonna get this money, we don't have it. Even if it's forty-four thousand dollars, we don't have the money. So I just, just wanna be honest with him, but so that's, that's, that's kind of where I, I'm at. I don't wanna take it from someone, somebody else. We did the same thing when the library wanted to give six hundred thousand, they could've used more, and we said no, enough, you know, that's enough. So let's, let's have a discussion, but I, I, I'm not gonna, I, I don't know where it would come from, and so I'm gonna say no. Yeah, Mike?
I actually am gonna argue for yes. The reason I'm gonna argue for yes is all tied up with phase two of, of the project and the fact that the village has seventy million dollars on our capital improvement plan for the next five years. And it seems to me like J.C. Park Phase Two could be deferred without losing any playing fields if we provided the money for Pickleball. And if we deferred Phase Two until building costs come down and our debt service is, is more under control, I think it's the more fiscally responsible thing for us to do. Two point five million dollars of debt when interest rates are going up is going to be expensive. So if we defer Phase Two, the current, the current site for Phase Two has a playground and two soccer fields. The proposed Phase Two without a baseball field, it has a multi-use field, it has a soccer field, and a Pickleball courts. All of those uses, with the exception of Pickleball, can be accommodated in our other parks. And I'm gonna be making a motion tonight to defer Phase Two, and this, to me, is a, is a component of making sure that the, the sports in our village have what they need and the upper fiscally responsible going forward.
All right. Yeah, Jenna?
Lisa, can you speak to the, where that money might come from before you, before you decide? That could be added to our?
Well, we probably don't have a lot of money for Phase Two, right? So I don't, I don't know where to get it from, to be honest. I, at this point, I don't know anything for purpose and necessarily use for that purpose in the town, so I don't, I don't know where to come from. Not to say we could tax for twenty-three million.
We're doing the, we do this project this year, we're gonna have the cash now to be able to do the project. I don't know where, I mean, I think right now where, where we are is kind of where we're prior to making this, to defer to a hundred and sixty thousand, which is, I think, the most efficient place to pull it from would be from the surplus fund balance that we create from the general fund. How that would take away from other projects that are in CIP that, we have a list actually in this meeting, so we'll just have to figure out how we would fund the later projects in twenty-three, twenty-five, that will be where we can pull that from this year.
So I guess with that in place, I am thinking of keeping Pickleball in Phase One. And, um, immediately in that, however, it's how I think you all, you know, in the forefront, and you're like, and you're wondering for money, like, there, it feels like a partnership to me, as far as you want to, and you're not just asking, you're asking to do it all, you're working with the village board to try and come up with solutions that are even workable, even the suggestion about the, the gate, you know, you're talking about moving along with things, identifying something that we have built in that is unnecessarily needed, not as part of the, I, I think is a good example of, of a partnership that's getting this work. And I also think that when we're talking about investing in quality-of-life-type projects in the village, you know, that, that was part of what J.C. started to go about, getting more, more places for, for J.C.'s house to do sports, to have it in the village, and making sure that we have this project, which is clearly so important to some of the residents, seems like something we need to work on.
Jenna, you would, you would request that the gates remain in? That way, there's always a secondary outlet, not a, not a, that's fair.
Sure. And that's fine, I just think, I just like the fact that this suggested.
Yeah, you shouldn't be considering this as, as you would require at least the gates to be pretty much a little four, eight, nine, or seven, something like that.
Yeah. Because my question was more of that, you know, if there's a bit of ideas, you're trying to get it forward.
Yep, exactly. All right. Who's on next? Yep, Amanda?
Yeah, I like the idea of keeping it in Phase One. Yeah, I mean, money's tight, I know it's hard to come up with, with money, it's hard to fundraise, and that's, all of that, but I really appreciate, you know, you're working with us and to raise that money. You know, it isn't like we're, we're trying to throw money at something that isn't gonna give back to the village, as Jenna was talking about, quality-of-life things do give back. There's a return on our investment, and yes, we're, we're hurting right now, we're trying to build a lot and, and we'll reap the benefits of later. And I feel like if we push this to Phase Two, it could be a long time before that happens. I don't think that's fair, because you guys are an active group and you're growing, and so I would, I would say, take that money from the, that fund. That's what, for, I think this is an important thing, and you're here, just doing the work. I hear it paying off later.
Thank you.
So you say the fund, you mean the fund balance? The fund, yeah. Sure. To get, that's, that's happening.
So, so last time we met, we did ask the staff to give us the list to per, for the, the project that we haven't done. And so we have that, if that, we have that list now, and so what we're saying is, we're gonna, we're gonna take money away from that list. Okay, just so you know.
Well, uh, all right.
Yeah, go ahead, Phil.
We started out with, I think, like, three hundred and thirty in the fund balance. We committed ten thousand for the flash pad. Since our last meeting, did you then, then move that money into the CIP, we have plans already, is that where your, did you come from?
Yeah, so in the, so for the CIP I am tonight, there's a list of items that those who have quoted the allocated, so if we're wanting to, to, to save fifty thousand, from first, well, we would just have to readjust funding sources for the project, and most likely, we'd add.
Got it. Well, that's my head to see, I, I'd have to agree that, you know, they're really, you know, really made an effort here, and to think about, that's what I said, you know, Mike Barone said, as a proportion, it's, it's really signed, it was a, and, um, I'm wary of, of taking money that the staff has taken on to commit to something else, and I think that'd be, that we do, that we help them decide, so you can, rather than just ask that, just, given that, that parameter, I'm willing to support. Yep, Jenna?
Yeah, looking at all this, I agree with what's been said, so far, I'm willing to support, but I think that, given the fact that we are value engineering, the concession stands, and there's some, you know, value engineering elsewhere within the village, that we get serious consideration to the deduction of the eighteen thousand dollars for the, the proposed change order, and the fencing of gates on that. I understand it's a safety concern, like, that's, you know, we're here to, to get that money, so looking at, and Chris might come wrong here, what I'm hearing is correct, we're at forty-nine thousand, if you take that eighteen thousand, we'd be looking at about thirty-one thousand dollars in additional funding for this. So I, I would be, I guess, as we look at value engineering, everything else, I like the idea of putting Pickleball back in Phase One, but I think it needs to also be on that value engineering bandwagon to a certain degree.
So Jeff, I'd like to comment, and the practicalities of removing the fencing, or basically just removing the fact that the ball's gonna go flying away?
From a, from a maintenance standpoint, less fencing in the center is better for my staff and everything like that, but I understand where they're coming at for their design of their courts.
Yeah. When you, when you look at the, the current designs now, as Pickleball is evolving, each court is fenced off for safety protocols, and that's very important, especially as you get the older clientele that's up there. And, and all the donations that have come in, the fifty-three thousand dollars is all predicated on the design that we've established with Jeff and Rettler. So I would, I would highly recommend you don't take the fencing out. Jeff wants to keep the gates in, certainly we can support that, that's fifty-four hundred dollars, that's an opportunity there. But the fencing, we really feel strongly, we've gotta have that in there, and it makes sense to have that in there. We don't wanna get anybody hurt, and, and that's always a possibility. And it's just, it's just not, it's not good. So we would love to keep the fencing in there, that's what we need to do.
Thank you. Amanda?
Can you explain how it's different from, like, tennis? I mean, tennis doesn't have gates between, I'm trying to wrap my head around why it's a safety issue for Pickleball, but not for tennis?
Well, a couple of reasons. One is tennis courts are generally spread out a lot further apart, and there's a lot less traffic on a tennis court. When you look at a player per square foot, so to speak, there's, the density is, is less than in a, on a Pickleball court. You've got a court that's twenty feet by forty-four feet, and you've got four players on that court. A tennis court is probably double that, maybe triple, I don't really know, I'm not a tennis player, and there's a lot more distance between the courts. So when you go to Oak Street and you look at what we have over there, they've got three courts that's spread out, that we can put at least eight courts in back and forth. So there's, there's the big difference. And you look at the way they're designing new courts nowadays, and, and even some of the ones that they've, they've designed in the area that have not put the fences in there, you'll see the potential for a lot of problems.
Okay. Thank you. I was not understanding the spatial constraints or how that works, so.
All right. So I'm just gonna say, I, I, last time, I, I'm, I, I like Pickleball, I like what you guys have done, stepped up. The, the problem that I have, and so I'm gonna vote no, is it taking away some of that money from other staff projects, so I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say yes to it. And it's for that reason. I have nothing against Pickleball and what you guys are trying to do, but that's, that's kind of where I'm gonna stand tonight, so.
Randy, have one comment?
Yeah.
Well, the only thing I'd, I'd recommend, if any kind of motion that you do make, all the other sports organizations that have donated have actually just donated, and not with any strings attached or anything like that. What Mike has is pledges, and, and I, and we talked about this today, that I would recommend any motion, if you do approve this, that any motion would have that those pledges are into lease and deposit, and say, within a week of, of the approval of this, that way you can count on those funds that have been raised.
And if I can make a comment, I would say that that's fair. The only, the only caveat, I've got three, four donors that they, they wanna donate through their fund, but they have to go through the, I don't know what the step is that they have to go through to take the non, the, the tax advantage, and I don't know how long that takes Martin and Lisa, but, but they're ready to go. And there's some major companies that have donated before. So I'm, I'm okay with a week to ten days, I've got checks. By the end of the week, we can start turning checks over to Martin and Lisa and, and start getting the other people squared away with making the transfers that they need to make. And again, it's, it's forty-nine thousand dollars, almost fifty thousand dollars when you keep the gates in there, and with the design that, that we've talked about, we're gonna have a very, very nice competitive court system there. And, and, and I guess in closing, if you think about what we've done in the park project and the quality of the facilities that we're putting in there, in particular, you look at baseball and, and the other athletic fields, and we've got drainage in there, and we've got sprinkler systems in there, we're doing things that when we were kids, we never had that type of thing. Those are top-notch fields, and we're doing the same thing for Pickleball, trying to provide a very safe environment and a top-notch playing facility, so people wanna come here. Yep?
Jenna?
Uh, I just wanted to say, I, I appreciate the comment about the value engineering, the fences, and I, I would normally say, yes, let's, let's talk about that, but because it is a safety issue and because we do have a lot of seniors who play Pickleball, I think we need to keep those in to make sure that we're providing a safe environment for the, for the sport, so. Otherwise, I don't know what you'd be like, yes?
So Jeff, if, if we were to make a motion to accept the, the bid from Fisher Excavating, did, bid seven twenty-eight, twenty-two without change, would that cover everything we've talked about tonight?
Can you say that again?
Sure. If we were to make a motion to accept the bid from Fisher Excavating in the packet, seven twenty-eight, twenty-two.
Correct.
To that amount, would that cover our discussion? That is with the fencing and, and with the gates?
That is, yes, that is, that is as designed with the fencing.
Okay, that's, that's my motion. With, with this caveat, and that is that checks that Mike has in his possession would be presented within a week, those that cannot present that in that time would, would provide a letter of commitment to the village, in lieu of the check, of course.
And Phil, so that's a motion, Phil?
It is.
Okay.
I would second that.
All right. That includes the awarding of an extra fifty thousand towards, yeah, project from surplus funds?
What are the deficit might be? That is.
I would say fifty thousand.
Yes, let's make it fifty thousand.
All right. Jenna, your second, okay? Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And I'm opposing? Okay. All right, we're on to eight. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you very much.
We're done. Reporter committees, nine is unfinished business, items offered discussion, possible action. Nine A is review proposed community input survey for two forty-nine North Main Street reuse opportunities and method for distribution. Who, anybody wanna, who wants to take this?
Finally, I packed it here. All right, so of the previous board meeting where the methodology was being discussed, there was a request, and I think, and emails since then, for the board to take a look at the survey, to be mailed out to both the neighborhood and the community at large, randomly selected group, about a third of our utility customer database. So we do have a draft of that survey included here in the packet, very similar questions to those that were asked at the workshop that many of you attended two weeks ago, so we can certainly review those. There's also some, I know, proposed language that Phil passed out in terms of just updating the cover sheet or kind of the explanation at the top of that survey, so that can be up for discussion in terms of if you all want to add or amend that language. Martin also included a map last week just to clarify the area, the neighborhood that would be included in that direct survey for those folks directly adjacent and across from the site, so that map is included as well. And then we can discuss the methodology if you like, but we've already sent the utility database to Vanuall, so they will, it's in an Excel sheet, so it will be randomly selected. We're making sure that we're not mailing copies to the village. Since we own a lot of property, make sure we're not on there, and, and looking for repeats too, just to make sure we're making the best use of those folks that are gonna be surveyed. So happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Phil, you, you wanna go, and then Amanda?
Yeah. Everyone got their handout?
Yeah.
And the opening statement language, it looks like it changed a lot, but really, really what it changed was is, reads, "The village of Oregon currently owns a two-point-seven acre property." That makes, makes it sound a lot like we've already paid for it. I'm not comfortable with that. I'd rather state that, as, as in my proposed relation, replacement language, "The village of Oregon incurred debt to purchase the two-point-seven acre property. Over the life term of the loan, the village will pay one point new to acquire this land." That's my proposed change. I have another, unless you want to discuss that one first.
Okay. Yeah, Mike?
Yeah, I'm opposed to that, unless we added terms that were likely to, "The sale price will likely be less than half of that, I'm giving it back." I think what you have here is highly prejudicial and leads people to believe that they would recover one-point-two million dollars in sale. And while I had no problem with the original survey, I certainly have problem with this.
Okay, I would make a motion that the opening statement, current language, or the change to, "The village of Oregon incurred debt to purchase a two-point-seven acre property," per the language in my handout.
Is the motion?
Yep. Amanda, or Derek? Okay, discussion? Yep. Jenna?
I'll be voting against the change purely because that was not the language that was used when we had the, the listening session and the walkthrough, and I think we need to work to be consistent in all the avenues that we're, we're trying to reach our community members.
All right, yeah, Amanda?
Yeah, I'm not really a fan either. I mean, I don't think it's fair to be talking about all the interest and stuff you pay. When people buy a house, they say, oh, I, you know, this was the asking price, or this is what I paid. If I went around telling people what I actually paid for my house, they'd be like, oh, you overpaid. We just don't talk about land in those terms, and I feel like it's saying the one-point-two million is, is inflating the price. So we could say we paid eight-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars, or we bought it for that amount, and we're still making payments on it, or whatever, but, but the one-point-two million really, really bothers me.
Okay. My response to that is, we just had a handout, we just discussed earlier tonight, that we're committed to pay for that property, and the total cost will be one-point-two million. So I don't really know where, why, what's misleading about that.
Well, I, like I said, that's not how people talk about land. We, we just don't. I mean, everybody pays interest on a purchase that you make payments on. And interest rates change, and I don't know. I, I'm just not a fan.
Well, I guess my response to that would be, are you comfortable with saying that the village of Oregon currently owns that property?
Well, yeah, I mean, like, I own my house, but I'm still making payments on it. Do we own it? I mean, I don't know. I, like, we're, we're just, maybe we're, it's hard. I don't know. I don't know the right answer here, I'm just saying, like.
I'm just trying to, there's certainly people in this village that think that that property has been paid for. In fact, someone actually presented to this board that it was paid for. And I'm trying to clear that up.
Fair, that's fair.
If you have a, you know, other proposed language, I'm willing to listen to it, but I, I'm not comfortable by any means with "the village of Oregon currently owns." You know, and to use your example, you may think you own your house, but if you only made a, make a small down payment and you, and you tried to sell it, I'm sure you'd find out shortly that the bank owned your house. And I think that's the situation here. We don't own that land, the bondholders own it.
All right, Jenna?
So the village did purchase the land, and unless it, like, when you buy a house, you do actually own that land, and then you sign a mortgage, which puts a lien on it for the debt that you've incurred. But you do own that land outright, and you have to satisfy the lien before you sell it.
Right.
But you own that land. When you look at Access Dane or something like that, it would say your name, not your name and, Bank of whatever. So you do actually, and I, and I say that as somebody who has spent the majority of my career in the banking industry, specifically with mortgages. You do actually own that piece of property. It is encumbered with a lien.
Right.
But you do own it. And so the village purchased this land, and that is a true statement, that we do own it. It is also a true statement that we use debt to purchase that land, but that doesn't negate the fact that we own it.
Okay, that's fine.
All right, anybody else? Yeah, Derek?
I would say if that's the case, would, if we're thinking about changing the language of Phil's revisions, revision, I would almost say that the village has borrowed the eight-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars to acquire this land, as opposed to if everyone's not comfortable with the one-point-two million that we will ultimately pay for it. I would suggest that we just put what we actually, what the original terms of sale were for it. I do take issue with the fact that we say that the village currently owns the two-point-seven acre parcel, and ultimately, I think that, to Mike's point about adding language in there, about the potential sale price for the land, without putting in any sort of requests or proposals from any sort of developers, I don't think we can necessarily put that language in there, because we have no idea who's willing to pay what for it. But I would say, as far as throwing it out for debate, putting the eight-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars that the village has committed, or initially committed to paying for it, as a compromise to the language.
Mike?
I think if you want to be fair, you need to include all the potential things that could offset the value of this property, which includes the fact a developer, likely developer of any affordable or senior housing or whatever else people wanna put on their property will come to the village and request TIF money. We know how much TIF money can amount to. The fact that the sale price was likely inflated when the village bought it, and will likely be less when we sell it, et cetera. I am comfortable with the language that's here. I am not comfortable with the language, as Phil wants to add it. Phil had an opportunity to come to the workshop. He had an opportunity to go to the open house on the land, he chose not to do so. Changing in the middle of the game, the wording here, will leave half of the civil, half of the population of Oregon thinking the rug got pulled under, out from under their feet, and instead of a fair process, this will forever be looked at the board manipulating a vote.
Randy?
All right, yep.
Just a comment, if you.
Yeah.
So, couple of things. I think, you know, the information that Martin presented with the, the history of the site and what was paid and everything, it hasn't just been presented, you know, today, there was the background memo that was presented, the mega memo back in probably April or so, so that information has been out there. Another thing I just wanna keep in mind, from my perspective, the purpose of this survey is to, you know, again, ask similar questions to what we're asked in the workshop. We're focusing a lot on land use and scale and potential uses of the property. Certainly, the financial information is important to understand the history of the site and kind of where the finances stand, but I know just from other surveys that I've been involved in and written, that it's really important to get to the point and make sure that you're using people's time wisely when you're asking them to do a survey. We likely will not get more than twenty-five percent of these back, so everything we can do to keep it short and sweet and clear, we could, you know, perhaps one compromise is providing a link or some information on our homepage on the village website that is the memo that Martin just presented here. More information about the purchase history of the site can be found on our website. We have a link to the memo. People wanna find out more, they could read it there. Think keeping the, I think that's really important information, again, to express, but on the survey itself, I just worry that we're gonna end up splitting hairs, and someone's gonna kind of just, you know, their eyes are gonna glaze over as they're reading all of these numbers, and we're not gonna really get the salient information that we want to get, you know. We have no idea what someone's gonna pay for it, we don't know when somebody might pay for it. All of those are kind of speculative numbers, but I think the information we said we wanted to get from the community is more on scale and design and use, and focusing on trying to get those responses out of the survey, I think is what the board should be focused on.
In the interest of what Lisa said, I would withdraw my motion.
All right, Derek, you?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that. I'll throw out a different idea.
Well, let's, let's, let's finish, let's finish.
So that motion is withdrawn?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
So, as far as the opening statement and the courage, current language, I would almost just propose that we remove about the first ten words and change the "at" to "the," so it would read, "The two forty-nine North Main Street, the study area, see map on the last page, is conducting a community input survey to gather feedback on potential reuse opportunities for the site. This feedback will be used by village officials in determining the future use of the property." That excludes both the currently owns and the pricing, to shorten it, to Elise, to Elise's point, but kind of also doesn't, to Phil's point, make it look like we currently outright own it.
Second.
Okay.
Clarification.
Repeat that.
Yeah.
And I have a just suggestion, Derek. So if we take the village of Oregon out of that first sentence, I think people will wonder why we're asking about just this random address. So I think keeping that in there, maybe just the village is, you know, requesting feedback on property.
Let me see if I can do this as we go.
Yeah, let's, let's, I'll write it out while you say it.
Yeah, go ahead, Derek.
The two forty-nine North Main Street site in the village of Oregon, the study area, see map on last page.
Okay, hold on, hold on. All right, so let me repeat this back. The two, the two forty-nine North Main Street property in the village of Oregon, the study area, okay?
And then parentheses, see map on last page.
Yep.
Is conducting a community input survey to gather feedback on potential reuse opportunities for the site. This feed, yep, this feedback will be used by village officials in determining the future use of the property.
Future use of the property.
So.
Randy?
So let me read this back.
Well, Candy, so the site itself is not conducting a survey.
Right.
The village of Oregon.
Can I, can I make a suggestion, Derek? Can see if, if this meets your concern. "The village of Oregon is conducting a community input survey to gather feedback on potential reuse opportunities for the property at two forty-nine North Main Street, the study area, see map on last page. This feedback will be used by village officials in determining the future of the property."
Wonderfully put, thank you, Mike.
Is that?
So you seconded.
So Phil, Phil did second that. Phil, you okay with that?
And that's exactly what, how I'd write it too. Well, Mike wrote it a little better, but.
Did you read that, Mike, or do you have it written out, or?
Well, I read it off of what's here, I just rearranged the wording.
I can write, I can write it out.
Okay.
I'll, I'll just send it to you.
Sorry.
Oh, hold, hold, we're discussing here.
It's good to know that it's two-point-seven acres.
We, we have that in front of us, we know that. We're, we're discussing here. So Candy, what do you need?
He's gonna send it to me, so.
Well, we need, we need a motion.
Yeah.
So do we have a motion on it?
Yeah, yeah. Derek's motion.
All right, and Phil's second?
Derek's motion, my second, as worded by Mike.
I think I got it. Do you want me to read it aloud now?
Yeah, why don't you, so we know.
"The village of Oregon is conducting a community input survey to gather feedback on the property, the two-point-seven acre property at two forty-nine North Main Street, to gather feedback on potential reuse opportunities for the site," and then the last sentence would remain the same.
I've almost got it sent to Candy, so just give me a second.
All right, so we, we got a motion, a second, everybody's clear what we're voting on? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
What, what now?
Okay, well, I'm just looking at the other change on, or is this separate from question five? Are we gonna do that separately?
Yep, it's separate.
Okay, then it's fine, let's continue, sorry.
So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay. So Phil, do you wanna, do you wanna, as long as you've got the floor, do you wanna, well, let's, let's see if there's anybody, anything from one to, one to four, anybody have any changes that they wanna make? Questions one to four, Phil's got one on five. Anybody? Let's go right in order. All right, Phil?
Change to number five, I think it's pretty straightforward. I'd like to strike increase in the village tax base and replace that with market and sell the property to reduce village debt.
I'll second that.
Okay. So, so we got a first discussion. One, one thing I, since we're on five, I wanna just bring up on, one of the things I, I don't see in these questions, that we actually had a staff memo that talked about green space. I don't see green space mentioned in these, in many of these questions. So like, example, number G, five G, "Providing new mixed-use opportunities, retail slash commercial housing or green space." I don't see that combination.
Five A?
Yeah, but I, I wanna see it all together.
Well, I think if people, if the people prioritize, then they could indicate that they're interested more than one of those.
It's a ranking question, so it's not a just select one option there. There are also, later in the survey, you know, opportunities to select overall, if you're supportive of a mix of uses or one particular type of use on the property, so.
Cause, cause one of the things that I've heard is, I've heard of people say, you know, I, I like the idea of green space, and couldn't it be a combination of potentially some housing and commercial and green space together to use it? And so that's kinda what I was sort of looking for, and if you tell me you think it's there, that's fine, but.
I, I think maybe the retail and commercial and slash, the retail slash commercial and housing, that's like an example of mixed use. It doesn't, it's not the only mixed use, so maybe we just need like an I dot E dot in front of it, or a, for example, would that make sense? Just meaning a mix, more than one use for the property, but not necessarily retail and commercial.
Okay, so changing the wording on G to say, for example, retail, commercial, and housing, et cetera.
Right.
But it's not necessarily that particular.
People could think of other mixed uses.
Okay.
All right, Phil, let's get back to you, cause you had E, did you already?
Right, as I, as I.
There is a motion.
Okay, there is a motion to.
Motion and second.
On a second. And Phil, your change is to change to market and sell the property?
To reduce village debt.
Okay, so we have a.
I believe we have a motion and second.
We have a motion and second, okay, on that one. Okay, let's finish that off.
Question for Elise. Elise, how does that change Van De Wall's stats and things that they're gathering from this, if we change the question that much?
In terms of combining the information from the workshop?
Yeah.
Well, the question.
How would they handle that?
I mean, the questions at the workshop, obviously, there was a conversation about opportunities and challenges and all of that, so that summary of the workshop and the feedback ordered there will be separate from the summary of the survey. So, everything that was captured there, questions were slightly different, the conversations were more in-depth, so that will still be captured, and then, you know, this will just be, it's easily quantified because everyone's getting the same survey, so we'll just see a collation of all the responses.
All right, so let's deal with this, this motion and second, to change to market and sell the property to reduce village debt. Okay? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
No one opposed.
No one opposed that one. All right, who's up next? Mike?
Looking at question number six, I was wondering if it would make sense to change that question to be ordered by preference by, like question number five? Cause I know when I added this into, was working on this question in. Cause I know when I added this into, was working on this question in the workshop, I myself was mightily challenged by the fact that actually I care about a number of things that are in here, but could only choose one of them. And I think we get better at data by preference ordering.
I think the question is worded so similarly to number five, that if they were both ranking, I think they would kind of overlap quite a bit. It could also be asked as, select your top three priorities or goal three, or something, for example. It's asking.
I don't feel strongly, so. I say I don't feel strongly on this one, so.
All right. Was that it for you, Mike?
Yeah.
Okay. Who else? Yep, Amanda?
Do we need to vote on the G, on question five G, adding that I E? Or, or like, you know, making that an example of mixed use, do we need to vote on that?
Yes.
If you want, pretty minor, but I would.
All right.
I just didn't know, I've.
All right, so Amanda, Martin says yes, so why don't you make a motion then for that?
Okay, so I will make a motion to change question five, answer G, to add the, the, the letters I dot E dot before retail slash commercial to indicate that that's one of several options, it's just an example.
All right, anybody want to second that? Okay, Jenna, any other discussion? All right, see none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, okay? All right, who's next?
Did you get my email?
I did, thank you.
Does it make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a lot to keep track of, so you guys are giving me more than I'm earning tonight.
All right, is it Derek? Yeah.
I guess I just have a question for Elise on this, as far as the survey goes, where it says it's gonna be mailed to two groups, neighbors directly adjacent and randomly selected. Cause I know there is a lot of neighbors at the listening session, are those results gonna be separated out? So you can look at them kind of as two separate buckets, or?
Yes, so, we also make sure that the randomly selected group does not include the folks in the neighborhood that are already gonna get a survey, so they won't be mailed two surveys, but yeah, though, we're planning on having them be two different colors paper, just to make sure that they don't get mixed up. But yeah, that'll be summarized separately in the report that Van De Wall, please back to you.
Thank you.
Amanda?
Yeah, and another question too, about the survey thing. Is it a third of households that goes to, or people?
So, it's utility customers, so it'll capture businesses and residents.
Okay.
So some may be renters, depending on if they pay their own water and sewer bills, some don't. There's not a great way to capture all of the renters and all the individual apartments, but we went back and forth around different lists that we might have access to, we get a list from Alliance, for example, more people who rent pay for their own electricity, but it was too difficult to, it was the timeframe that we have to try to get a list.
I, I, yeah, I just been looking for clarification at all.
It'll be anybody who pays the utility bill within the village.
So if two people's names are on it, though, there's only one survey, they have to fight over the answers.
Right, one household or business survey, so someone will be designated, or they'll fill it out together.
Okay.
Jenna?
In looking at the rental properties where there isn't multiple utility customers, where the landowner or property manager, maybe whoever is the one utility customer, did we map those areas out to make sure that there wasn't any one large area that isn't gonna potentially have any representation in the survey?
It's randomly selected, so I'm not in charge of selecting the, the addresses, but I think they should be pretty widely, I mean, we don't have huge swaths of the village, we, that are renters only, there are a couple developments that obviously have several dozen people in them. So, in that case, you know, we may, we're probably only gonna get a third of those apartments as well, just in selecting a third of all of the utility paid customers around the village. Another opportunity people always have, and I've been getting forwarded comments from a couple of you that have been getting letters from, anybody at any time can always send an email directly to me or any of you, and I'm collecting all of those together, and those will be sent to Van De Wall. So anybody that is worried that they're not gonna get a survey, or is a renter, or would just like to voice their opinion, that's certainly gonna be just sort of, you know, the open-ended response, that'll be included in the report as well.
I have one, if you look at right above seven, the directions there, it may be, may be silly, but please select only one answer choice for each question. Any objective, we just changed that, please select only one choice for each question? It just seemed odd, please select only one answer choice for each question. Anybody have any, any problem with just, just getting rid of answer?
No, it makes sense.
So please select only one choice for each question.
Yeah. Well, actually, I have a second thoughts on that.
It just seems very, it seems strange.
It's, if I can jump in here, as a, an editor, that's a, a common phrasing on tests. Yeah, I mean, it feels redundant
Yeah.
to a lot of people, but I mean, it, it's widely understood to, to just mean one, one choice, but.
That's fine.
It's common wording, unfortunately.
That's fine, forget it.
Yeah, well, I've seen a lot of tests, it's what I do.
All right, anybody else, anything else? Yeah, Derek?
I just got a, I guess, question for my fellow trustees, as far as comfort level with the survey being mailed as to those two groups, again, the neighbors directly adjacent to the property in particular. Are we at all concerned that the majority of the people at the listening session, I mean, are neighbors of the property, and then they not only are filling out that survey, but they're also filling out the survey mailed to them as well, kind of getting, you know, almost twice the, the say in what the answers are gonna be from the neighborhood?
They'll be segregated, won't they?
Again, they'll be separated, and it's obviously up to the board to use your discretion and understand that, you know, the people who come, came to that workshop are obviously more engaged than the average citizen, so you're gonna hear, you know, probably stronger opinions at an event like that than you're gonna hear, that's the purpose of doing that randomly selected survey, so I think when you all see the results, you know, take them with a grain of salt, knowing that, you know, the people in the neighborhood have a different investment and connection to the property than the, the village at large, well, but that's why we'll keep them separate.
I'm still not a hundred percent clear, well, we, the data presented to us, what we presented, here's some data from the workshop, here's some data from the survey.
Correct.
It won't be merged.
Right, so the summary report will say, yep, here's the collection of information from the workshop.
Yeah.
Here's what the neighborhood survey said, here's what the community survey said, here's email responses and letters and other information, and then.
I think that addressed us, Derek's concern.
Yeah, yeah, like I said, I was just throwing it out there to see if anyone else had a concern about that.
Yeah, it was a good one.
All right, anything else? Martin, you want a motion on this?
Yeah, I would have a motion to authorize staff proceed.
Proceed with, with the suggested changes?
Yep, and the methodology presented.
Okay, so who want to make that? Phil and Mike? Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Okay. Okay, we are, let's see where we're at here. We're on nine, it looks like we're on nine B. Supplemental police staff, staffing reimbursement agreement template, staff recommendation, motion to approve as presented. Chief, I think you've mentioned this to us, you want to just say one sentence?
Yes, briefly, so, a while back ago, the board directed myself and attorney Dragni to draft a template agreement. This was on the heels of the local ice arena, asking for an additional officer for some home games for the hockey team, which we are happy to accommodate, they do bring in big crowds for their home games, and it certainly is nice that if police assistance is needed there, we don't have to pull somebody off the road. Obviously, the agreement covers what the police department will do, and then how payment comes about, so. I did speak with attorney Dragni, and I, just to be fiscally responsible with using his time, we moved forward trying to create a very generic contract, because, you know, I've already had several other organizations, businesses start talking to me about the possibility of officers helping out. Obviously, this is only when we're properly staffed and can accommodate, but you'll see in there that he's drafted that agreement.
Okay, thank you, chief. All right, so I'll entertain a motion, a second, to approve this template. All right, I'll see Amanda and Derek, any other discussion on this? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? All right, nine C, all right, we got a couple waives, first and second reading, so we'll, we'll do the waiving first, let me just sort of read the, the ordinance, charter ordinance number twenty-two oh one, repealing, repealing the charter ordinance relating to the election and tenure of offices of village attorney, and repealing of a charter ordinance, ordinance number thirty, relating to the selection of the village clerk and village treasurer, and the consolidation of the office of the village clerk and village treasurer, and adoption of a charter ordinance relating to the method of selection and tenure of the village clerk and village treasurer. So staff recommendation is motion to suspend the rules for the first and second, and then we'll take the ordinance, so let's do the
Move to suspend.
The, the waving, okay? Any second? All right, Derek? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so let's take the, chief, let's do the ordinance, number twenty-two oh one, I'll take a motion for approval. Mike? Take a second from Amanda? Any discussion on this one? Yeah, Mike?
So this is the last time that we will have to move to suspend the rules and not have to do a second?
Got one more.
One more, next slide.
Next one, Mike, not quite.
Just one more.
One more.
This is the third ordinance, so.
All right.
We're getting into chapter one and two.
Yeah. All right, we got a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? All right, so Mike, we're not quite done, we got D, we're gonna have to do a waiver on this one too. Ordinance number twenty-two dash thirteen, ordinance repealing and recreating chapters one and chapter two of the village code, creating chapter sixteen of the village code related to the administration of the cemetery, and repealing and recreating chapter twenty-six point oh nine of the village code related to the electronic preservation of records. Staff recommendation is to approve, suspend the rules, and approve, so let's do the suspension first. Mike, last time, you want it? All right, all right, all right, we got, got one from Mike, and then a second, Amanda? All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so then let's finish her up with, by approving ordinance number twenty-two dash thirteen?
Before we move on?
Yeah.
It wasn't a, a issue with what we just passed, but just a comment on section four, twenty, the twenty-six point oh nine, electronic preservation of records. Do we have a procedure for ensuring that our electronic records are kept in a readable format? So there is a history of, in, in computers, of us moving from one storage medium to the next, and losing access to floppy drives and CD-ROMs, there are, I don't know how many databases that are still in FoxPro and things that are no longer supported, and the records do us no good if we don't migrate them at the appropriate times.
Yeah, generally speaking, they're all PDF format.
Okay.
So.
Anything, I think anything that we can preserve electronically, we do. But there probably are certain documents that are too delicate, that we, we do not preserve electronically, we just preserve them.
We just preserve that.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll have a new vault to keep them in, too.
All right, so, I'm looking for a motion, a second, to approve the, the ordinance. Amanda? And Derek? Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Posed? Okay. Moving along to E, resolution number twenty-two dash twenty-eight, adopting the village board handbook. Staff is recommending that we approve it as presented. Why don't we get a motion, a second, get it on the table? All right, Amanda and Mike? Any discussion on this? We've talked about this. Okay? Anybody? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Okay. Onto F, continuing review of twenty-twenty-three to twenty-thirty-two capital improvement plan. Martin, do we want to say?
Yeah, I got a couple
Okay.
things, so this is continuing discussion, you guys have had this in front of you a couple times now, I would say the biggest change is Public Works Department putting forth a proposal for the use of the remaining ARPA funds. And so you can see those changes highlighted in yellow in your packet. We have approximately six hundred and eighteen thousand in funds available from that. What they're proposing is to use that towards water and sewer infrastructure, specifically for Washington and State Street reconstruction projects. I know we kind of had, I guess, dueling comments at the last meeting where there was an interest in moving up some deferred projects, but also ways that we can spread some projects out. So this would be addressing some projects that have been deferred for, for a number of years, and can potentially maybe find some efficiencies with doing it in parallel with the county's Geneville Street project next year. So you will see a little bit of a bump in moving these projects up to twenty-twenty-three and using the ARPA funds. But that does help smooth out some of the expenses in twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five. And the Public Works Department also pushed back some other street reconstruction projects that are listed in your packet. The other big thing, and we talked about it a little bit at the beginning of the meeting with pickleball, but there was a hundred and sixty-four thousand remaining in the fund balance surplus. Obviously, if we're gonna be putting fifty thousand towards pickleball, we're gonna need to readjust this. So, I guess if there's any input on that, we take it, otherwise, we can also go back and try to retool that. Most likely, whatever is, is left over, we'll just have to, to borrow in twenty-twenty-three to cover those projects. The other thing that I highlighted in the memo was the use of our municipal room tax. So we collect room tax from the hotel and from Airbnb's as well. And so seventy percent of that is dedicated to the tourism commission by state law to use for tourism purposes, but thirty percent of it gets to be retained by the village. We have about forty-six thousand of that accumulated right now, recommending using twenty thousand of that towards the bike and pedestrian study that was put forth by Public Works. And if you read there, some good news, we were actually awarded that grant already from the DOT to do that study, so I'll give a lot of credit to Warren. She did that grant application with some help from village hall staff as well. Yeah, good thing. So, in the packet, as we've seen at the la, last meeting and meeting before, Ellers has calculated the impact on debt service. So with moving some of these projects around a, a little bit, there is a little bit of a, a reduction in what you've seen previously, I think we were reaching almost seventy-eight to seventy-nine percent of our debt limit. And so now that's reduced down to seventy-six at the peak in twenty-twenty-seven. I think ideally, we want to stay below that seventy-five percent mark. You know, there's a couple things working in our favor for that. The analysis from Ellers is very conservative in terms of growth. They're using two percent annual growth, we've averaged seven percent annual growth over the last five years. And then there's a few projects that I noted in my memo, fiber service, the West Side Park. I know we can, we can talk about the facilities projects. You know, some of those things get extended out or are just not needed, or, for example, the fiber service project. You know, that would just benefit, you know, the impact that you're seeing there in Ellers' analysis. So right now, Ellers is planning on coming to the August fifteenth meeting, would it be the next meeting, to present the financial management plan? If you recall, last year, they came and presented that. A much more expanded, robust version of. Um, it's a much more expanded, robust version of the analysis that you have in the packet. Um, it covers the general fund, it covers the utilities, which you'll see the impact on the utility side for the first time. So that is the plan, and I think we want to wrap up the CIP shortly thereafter, so then we can move into the annual budget process in September.
All right, questions, comments? Yep, Mike?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to defer Phase Two of the J.C. Park Project until twenty-twenty-four, when it can be reevaluated. I think we should wait until we see construction costs come down and have a better idea of our debt, until we commit to another two and a half million dollars on what was already a four million dollar project. As I stated earlier, we have playing field alternatives, particularly now the pickleball. We decided to go ahead with that in Phase One. We have soccer fields, we have baseball diamonds. We have everything we need to go forward. They may not get sprinkled properly, they may not have drainage underneath them properly, but the fields are there and are playable.
Is there a second?
A second for discussion.
Okay, discussion.
I think that's a big decision. Um, I'm, I'm not against delaying necessarily, but I guess I'd want to know what exactly is in Phase Two, 'cause I'd want to take a second look at that and, and figure out, you know, what, what's exactly is gonna be done after Phase One, and, you know, what would the park look like if it sat for a year after Phase One? So I don't know if anyone can help with that, like, there would be pickleball courts and a one-story concession stand ideally.
Well, the one, the one-story concession stand is probably, is part of Phase One anyways.
Right, but it's, so I mean, like, between, like, if we delayed it, what would that, what would the park look like during that time?
Phase Two adds the fourth ball diamond. It finishes the second, uh, playing field. It creates the playground, updates the badly needed upgrade to the playground out there. It also adds the adult exercise area and special needs, I'll call it special needs, uh, incorporation, huh, amenities to the, to the, uh, the park area. And also adds, uh, lighting, um, to the facilities and everything. 'Cause that'll be the next request, quite honestly. We need our, our fields or courts lit. And they will be back.
There would be, though, that multipurpose field for soccer, lacrosse, whatever. Would that be done, or is that a later phase?
That would be done as well. That, that's, no, that's, there's only two phases. The whole reason we had to break this into two phases is budget reasons.
Okay.
Um, but that's been changed already.
Okay, yeah, Derek?
Just a question, do you have any chance we could pull up the, the map on the screen so we can actually see what we're talking about here?
So, so while he's doing that, Mike, can you, can you restate your motion?
To defer Phase Two of the J.C. Park Project for reconsideration in twenty, twenty-twenty-four.
Okay, thank you.
So what's currently on that land, just so people know, is a playground, two soccer fields, a, a shelter that I believe is disappearing with.
A shelter stand.
Okay, so the shelter, a bathroom, two soccer fields, and a playground. And what that would be replaced with, in addition to lighting, um, is a soccer field, a multipurpose use field, and a baseball field.
Okay, so this shows, so this shows Phase Two right here. Phase One includes these three fields, these parking lots, this multi-use field, this parking lot, and the expansion. And, um, but was taken out with alternate was this, this area right here, which is the playground and adult exercise area, I guess would be the right term, flexibility in adult, um, this play field, and of course, now you've added the, the pickleball courts back in here. And lighting. Well, Phase Two originally, well, no, I mean, originally, there was space to be able to put more additional courts, which there might be Phase Two could be additional, a few additional courts, not a whole nother six courts, but they could possibly fit some in over here. These trees will have to go and, and everything, but.
Okay, so the.
Oh, I'm sorry, Randy, it also involves, um, the maintenance, uh, facility for the, for all the equipment and materials that have to be stored out there.
Okay. Yeah. Uh, Jen, do you have a question?
Uh, yes. Uh, you had mentioned there was some accessibility items in Phase Two. Is that specifically related to the playground or?
To the playground. It's like sensory type of stuff, it's for people on the autest, autism spectrum.
Yeah.
Sensory play area devices, like a, it's, it's almost like a box, it's kind of like a.
It's called a. Yeah, it was basically a chair that has.
Three sides on it.
Yeah, it's more protected, there's fidget-type devices, there's a fun name for it that I'm not remembering, but that was one feature. You know, it would be the pour-and-place surfacing like we have at Talons and Netherwood, so accessible equipment, some pieces.
As well as accessible swings, accessible spin structure, and other things that we've been able to try to incorporate into those.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Amanda?
Do we have a magic number that we've come up with for, uh, sport, the other sports groups to raise, like, if they didn't want to delay it a year? Like, if they came to us and said, hey, we raised a hundred thousand dollars, or whatever that number is, like, that we could then put it back, could move it back up again? Do we have, like, a goal that we could hit? I don't know.
I'm not gonna say anything. Yeah.
All right, so let's deal with this, this motion, unless there's any other. So the motion is to delay Phase Two.
So, I guess, I'll comment again. Um, I guess from my perspective, I'm gonna vote no, not because I'm not interested in delaying it, but I feel like since we just, the idea was just brought to me this morning, I'd like to sit, or this morning, this evening. Um, I'd like to sit with, you know, have that information in front of me, to sit with it and really take some time to think through it before I make a, a decision to delay it. So I'll be voting no on this motion.
Yep, Phil?
What Jenna said.
Okay. All right, yep, Mike?
So, do we have an option to delay this motion till the fifteenth, or do we need this information by then?
You can table it.
Then I will withdraw my motion from the, the thing and give you time to think about it.
Thank you.
That's fine.
The other thing to think about, too, with, with this plan is, um, you do have decision points coming up, too. I mean, even if you approve the CIP, you still have to go through and approve the debt, right? So at that point, you could say, uh, no thanks.
Yeah.
So there are still opportunities.
Okay, thank you, Martin.
And that actual debt approval will be next February, or?
Well, the debt approval will be done during our budget process, which will be getting to, into all of those meetings in the month of October. So it can be done at that time, too, I mean.
But the final decision on the debt would be then or in February?
Yeah, well, I mean, so.
Yeah, we started.
Up until February, we could change it, I guess.
Yes, yeah.
Correct.
So there's plenty of time to.
So we're doing drawing?
Yeah.
You are, and you are, too?
It's off the table. Okay? All right, anything else on capital improvement plan? Are we ready to move on? Okay, let's go to ten, new business. Items are for discussion, possible action. Ten A is future agenda items, gives the board members the opportunity to place items, and new business on our future agenda for discussion. Yep, Mike?
Yeah. Certainly, J.C. Park Phase Two, although I think that'll already be somehow on the future agenda. And then I would like to also place on the future, uh, agenda having a, a discussion about how we intend to manage the art funds in the village and getting a permanent committee set up to, to manage the funds and recruitment of artists and things like that, so that the village moves forward transparently.
So, so Mike, just, uh, on that, we, we're working with staff and a couple artists just to sort of get a draft document of a call for art out to artists within the Dane County area. So we're gonna be bringing that draft for review for the Village Board, 'cause we, we just signed the contract, and there's a time limit sort of on how much, how much time we have for the grant. So we're, we're gonna be bringing a, a draft of, it's something that we would send out to artists saying, hey, are you interested in participating in sculptures? And then we give them some parameters. And so we've been sort of working with staff and some artists, and that's coming back to us for, for review, just to sort of keep things sort of moving along.
So I, I know you've talked to me about bringing that to the September twelfth meeting, so is that okay? Maybe we can kind of combine?
We can combine them, but I really think we need to bring everything we're doing to the surface so that our citizens are aware of what's going on.
Is September twelfth okay?
September twelfth is fine, we can make, and at that time, we can discuss, you know, whether or not we need a permanent committee and how things are juried and things like that.
Yeah, and Mike, I'll just sort of share with you, cities who have kind of this, they have a, they have a policy, and it's, it tend to be fifteen, twenty pages, and it kind of lays out sort of all that stuff, just to be, just to be transparent, how things work. This is new to us, too, it's our first time.
Yeah.
All right, anybody else have anything? For future? All right, we're taking adjournment. Amanda and then Jenna? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned, thank you.